My pub meeting to order, please. This is September, excuse me, no it isn't.
No, what are you doing?
I mean that is coming. Yeah, I know it doesn't come in September. December 19th, 2023 Springfield School Board Meeting. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
Mrs. Frola?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Mr. Furlong, would you? Where is he? Oh, there he is. I thought maybe he went home already. Mr. Adams will sign.
What you can do is you can stand and raise your right hand when I'm going to speak. No, you have to say how you do. Ready? You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as members of the Board of Education and as principal local schools located in some county of Ohio to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your containment in said office until your successor is elected and qualified.
I do.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We were very fortunate, I think, with Mr. Ray submitted his resignation. And we published the opening. We had multiple candidates, very strong candidates, to that. But in all of them, we were fortunate to see a desire to support the schools, to jump in and be part of the effort to move us forward. And I thank them and upset you, but, and welcome, Mr. Furlong.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, at this time?
All right, so Mrs. Warner, would you like to get up? And would you like to introduce our, whatever month this is, students, Decembers?
Absolutely.
Not September, but December?
So it doesn't look like we have any of our students present this evening, but let's go ahead and recognize them formally, and I'll make sure that they get their certificates at school tomorrow. I am here representing National Honor Society. They have decided that once a month, they want to nominate both a junior high and a high school student for student of the month. The teachers submit nominations. The students who are in National Honor Society look at the nominations without the student's name present, and they make a choice. So we'll start with Aiden Green. Aiden comes to class every day with a smile. He's polite and friendly and always willing to participate in class and help others if he can. Aiden truly represents what it means to be a Springfield Spartan, and he was nominated by Mrs. Lori Smith. He's student of the month for November. This is posted as you come into the building and as the months go on. This will be over by the community center and will be displayed for the rest of the school year. Our junior high student is Alicia Vang, and it reads, "I would like to nominate Alicia Vang for student of the month." Alicia comes to school with a smile on her face every single day. The most impressive thing about Alicia is the quality of work she turns in. She goes above and beyond to meet the expectations of any assignment. Her enthusiasm for learning is contagious to those around her. We are lucky to have such an amazing student. And she was nominated by Angie Callaway. So same thing, this will also be posted. Congratulations to those students, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Next, I'm going to invite Depp Burgess up to the podium, and she's got some great things to celebrate. Oh, and the kids, can't celebrate without the kids, go on up.
It's way better with the kids up here. It's about them, not me. And I think Willard is here somewhere. I'm not sure where he got to, but here it is. With his crew. He was heading over to ask him if he could access it. Oh, okay, oh, no. Okay, all right, well, I'll try to talk really slow, maybe he'll make it.
Okay.
I'm Depp Burgess. I am the coach of the high school and junior high cross-country team. This is my second season as the varsity coach. I've been with the junior high for a long time, like, I don't even want to say how long. But we had some exciting things go on this year. We took three junior high kids to the state cross-country meet, and one high school student for the second year in a row qualified for state. So I'm just going to talk about those four. I could talk a long time, but I'm just going to give you highlights of what they did. So Kendall is up here with me. Kendall came into her running style at the end of the season, which I was really excited for because that means next year she'll be ready. At our MAC championship, she came in 15th, which is a big deal, so she, that was one of her better races. And then when she went to the state, she placed 29th overall out of 119 kids. So she did a really good job, and we were really proud of her. Bree is who I'll talk about next. She had a really good season this year. She had a good season last year as well, but we're not going to talk about that. We're just going to talk about this year because I, I'm on a time skip frame. She, in her first race of the season at Dover, not her first race, but she placed first at Dover, which is the hardest course that we race all year, and she finished first overall. She took third at East Canton, fourth at Glen Oak, fourth at the MAC championships, and then at the state meet, she was ninth. So she actually made the podium for the junior high kids. So she had a great season. Willard, who is not here, but his mom can tell him all the nice things I said about him. He placed in the top a lot. I'll just give you his top three finishes. Third place, he placed third place at Glen Oak, as well as Boardman, as well as East Canton. Then he was a second-place finisher at Columbiana by less than .32 seconds. Like, it was, the first place boy ran 10 seconds, no, 10 minutes, sorry, 1 second, .11. And Will was 10 seconds, 10 minutes, 1 second, .43. So it was really, I mean, it was like really close. And if he didn't, it would have just been a little bit longer of a race, we would have had him, because Will was coming on strong. So that was his second-place finish. He was kind of mad about that. But then he took first at Dover, the hardest one that we raced at all season long. He placed first at Malone, and he was first at the MAC championships with our, all southern schools that were there. We didn't have a team, we didn't have enough to represent a team, but he was first on the podium by himself. His time was 11:28, and the runner behind him was 11:48. So he won handily. He wasn't a team winner, but he was the overall winner. So Willard did really good. Then we took him to the junior high state meet, and he came in first place there. So he was on the podium, and he was first placed by a lot. So he had a really good season. So that was my junior high kids. Myself, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Skaggs had a hand in all of that, so I have to give them some credit as well because we worked really well together. It was a great season. Now we're going to talk about Payton, who's on the end. He's the big guy down there. 16th place was his worst finish overall for the whole season, and that was at Boardman, and there was 483 runners there. So 483, and he came in 16th, and that was his worst finish. So he had a great season. He was 12th at Glen Oak. He was 7th at Legends, and there was 428 runners there, so a lot of kids on the line. He placed third at the Malone Invitational. At the MAC championship, he was third. And at Regionals, and we just finally got our medal for the Regionals meet. It was a big deal to come in third at Glen Oak. He was second place at Dover, again, the hardest meet that we raced, and my kids did really well there. And then at East Canton, he was second. He was first at the Frola-Frelic, our home course meet that we honor Mrs. Frola at, and he was first at Columbiana by almost a minute. He finished in a great time. At districts, he was 22nd, or 21st, sorry, Payton. And then because he took third in the Regionals, that qualified him to state for the second year in a row, and at state, he was 52nd out of 182 kids. So he had a really worthy, really noteworthy season, and so we worked hard this season. And I, I'm sorry that I'm going to lose him, but we have lots of good things coming up, and he's been a really big influence on our kids. And there's Will. There's Will, he made it. Will, I already talked about you and how great you were, so I won't do that again, but thanks for coming. And congratulations, guys.
Thank you. It is always exciting.
Congratulations, it's a lot of work. Okay, now we'll have board members informal. Mrs. Miranda, you want to start?
Congratulations for a great season, as they believe. I really don't have nothing. Can't believe you won't be here. I've harassed you for years. Many people don't know that, but I have. It would be very weird to not see you here. Maybe you can come and harass us now. But thank you for all that you've done for the district and the community, and we'll miss you.
Appreciate it.
Donnie?
Just thank you for the opportunity. It was fun to have my daughter here on the first one. And thanks to Larry and everyone that gave me a lot of encouragement, so thank you.
Mr. Hofer?
Thank you. I'll go dismiss with the updates this month. There's not a whole lot going on, but I think I'm going to dive deeper into some other things. Donnie, welcome.
Thank you.
It's good to have you on board. And Larry, you always seem to be the stable ship in the ocean when I had, when I had to bounce some things off your head, so. Things about education that I still am learning, even after the 12 years. It's an, it's an ocean of learning that you, I don't think you ever stop learning, so I just want to thank, thank you for your service. We'll miss you.
Love you.
To the, to the community, as we can still say that in our country. Have a Merry Christmas, I believe in that, and we'll look at, we'll see you in January.
Mr. Petrie?
It's been a pleasure to serve the community of Springfield Township in Lake Moore. I've loved being a representative for my little village, and I think that there are some great things to come on this board, and I wish the two new board members that are coming on the best of luck, and hope that we have some success, and hope that your good ideas get a levy passed for us because in my tenure, I've not been able to do it, so it's time for somebody else to step up and get it done. Appreciate all of you, and I will miss this, but it's time to do something else.
I just want to add a thank you to, for Mr. Petrie. Both of us having had careers in education, there were times when we looked at each other and said, "We've seen that before, haven't we?" Or, you know, what. So it was, he's a colleague as well as a board member, but, and I told Larry, Larry, this, when I came to, when we moved to Springfield and I became a teacher, and I think, there's a gentleman back there, it was early on in my teaching career, there was a lady, I was at Shrop Junior High, and there was a lady at Spring Hill Junior High who kind of took me under her wings because I had not been in Ohio again. I'd had years of teaching, but not at, anyway, this, and her name was Alice Petrie. And she got me through that, you know, the learning and adjusting classes and what to do, and so I'd never met her son before, so it's been a pleasure to work with him. And, you know, he's going home and say, "Mrs. Frola says thank you again." So, thank you. At this time, we are going to go into a very short executive session, so.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second that the board adjourned to executive session and will be returning to complete our agenda.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
We'll be back.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second that the board approved the minutes of the regular meeting of November 21st, 2023, and the special meeting on December 12th. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
At this time, citizens' comments on agenda items. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, all will go to number 11. It's recommended that the board approve payment of bills. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the board approved the payment of bills for the month of November pending audit, and as usual, the, the list of, is exhibit two on the agenda.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 12, payment of bills then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payment of bills per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.41.
So moved.
Mr. Adams, it's been moved in second.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Acceptance of financial reports.
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved in second that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for November 2023, and that would be exhibit four, five, and six on tonight's agenda.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Number 14 is personnel. It is recommended that the board accept or approve the following personnel items. 14.1, retirement resignation of teacher Jeff Alrick, effective the end of the 23-24 school year. Do you want to say?
I can wait till you're done.
Okay.
Pull it out, I mean, if that's okay?
The 14.2, retirement resignation. It is, we accept the retirement resignation of classified employee Vance Rife, effective August 30th, 2024. Item 14.3 under personnel is employment. Employee Melina, oh, I apologize, McGivernovich, Vic, as a two-hour cafeteria worker at Spring Hill High School Junior High, per the negotiated agreement pending proper licensure, and that would take effect December 8th, 2023. 14.4, employment of Catherine Clark as a four-hour standby bus monitor, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective November 28th, 2023. 14.5 is employment of Catherine, Catherine Clark as a three-hour lunchtime slash playground monitor at Spring Hill, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective November 28th, 2023. 14.6, employment, employ Rachel Frame as a bus monitor, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective the first day assigned. 14.7, employ Joanna Wagner as a three-hour lunchtime playground monitor at Spring Hill Elementary, per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, effective the first day assigned. 14.8, our employment of home instructors. Employ the following as home instructors as needed for the 23-24 school year, pending proper licensure, and those are, names are Lisa Brown, Melanie Smithers, and Ray Lynn Craig. And personnel, 14.9, unpaid leave of absence, leaves of absence. Approve the following unpaid leaves of absence for Laura Langsdale, Joseph Eppner, and Rachel Frame, when the date's given.
So moved.
Second.
So just a couple of things, Jeff. So Jeff started with us back in 2002. He only had worked at the high school as an intervention specialist, and he is definitely going to be somebody that we are going to be missing up at the high school. You always see him bebopping around, going from room to room, so we wish Jeff all the best in his next endeavors. Vance Rife, he was hired in 1996, and that's where he started at the high school. He was at the high school to 2010, where he moved over to Roosevelt, where he then came back to the high school, and then he ended up his career at Spring Hill. So good luck also to Vance in his future endeavors. And just so people know what home instruction, home instructors are, so home instructors, these are for students who, for some reason, cannot come to school, either for a medical reason or a special needs reason. And, you know?
And they require sometimes to be educated in the home setting, so, or in a not-school setting. So sometimes they, the teachers will arrange an alternative place to meet, or they'll go to their house and just provide supplemental schooling for them until they're able to come back into the school setting. Usually it's temporary, you know, a few weeks here, a few weeks there, but, so hopefully, we haven't needed anybody until just now, so that's, we've had some good luck with our kids and needs and everything, but now if we have a need, we have a couple of people on the list.
So, you know, we thank them for taking that extra, extra work, so.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 15 is tax advance. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution authorizing the advance of local taxes by the county fiscal office for the 2023 tax year payable in 2024, and that's exhibit seven on tonight's agenda.
I make motion?
Second.
It has been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed. There are some revisions to the school calendars, and it is recommended that the board approve revised 2023-24 and 24-25 school calendars. And again, those revisions are part of tonight's agenda, they're exhibit eight.
So moved.
And, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And these, that's my fault. And these calendars are updated based on our, our current negotiations with it, and they will be posted tomorrow online, so if anybody needs to see them.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed. Number 17, Ablus Resolution to Make Provisional Changes to Comply with House Bill 33.
So moved.
Second.
So what this is, is being that the House Bill 33 changed the name of the Ohio Department of Education to the Department of Education and Workforce. So all our policies, we don't have to go back and redo all our policies, so it's just saying that anytime that ODE, or any type of form of ODE is there, it will go to DEW for the Department of Education and Workforce.
Thank you.
My thought on that is this is all unnecessary, but it's, at the state level, I don't know why they did that, but they did what they did because they did.
What, you mean changed to the DEW?
Yeah.
Because they made it, because they made it a government?
What I'm saying, I'm being sarcastic.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry, went right over my head. On the sarcasm part. Yes, you're right. I agree with you. Sorry.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
A motion passed. How do I read this?
I'll nominate Cynthia Frola.
Thank you.
I second that.
It is, it's recommended that the board name Cynthia Frola as president pro temp until the 2024 president is elected at the organizational meeting scheduled for January 9th at 2024 at 6:00 p.m.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Donations. I love this part.
I know.
19.1 Walmart. Donation of school and Halloween harvest supplies valued at approximately $12,400 to Springfield Local Schools. That's impressive. 19.2, Lake Moore Firefighters Association. Accept a donation of $1,200 to provide EMS standby at football games from the elementary, elementary, from the Lake Moore Firefighters Association. That's impressive, too.
I make motion? Oh. I'll do a thumbs up.
Was it second, was it?
No, we don't approve that. I just like to talk.
We can, but we don't, we don't have to.
Oh, okay, well, I'm going to talk.
You know what, you know what?
I thought you have to, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have to.
And I'll second that, though.
Okay, are you going to second it? You got the first second?
Yeah.
Okay. So Walmart, again, a box truck came over, and Mary, in her, in her 95th other job that she has, is unloading the truck with the boxes, and her, her office looked like Walmart's,
For a little bit.
For a little bit, and we were able to get everything out, so that was exciting. And then for the Lake Moore Firefighters, you know, we do appreciate the fact that they're at the football game. You know, we don't ever want to use them at the football game, but we're happy that they're there at the football game, and we like when we score a touchdown, their lights go on. So it's a little bit of our own little fireworks.
And I'd be, I might be dating, aging myself here, but is this a new, something that's new recently? Because we used to, you know, we were always built for this.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah, I believe this was the first year it's been.
This is the first year, all right.
So we're, we're.
I just want to recognize.
Thank you.
That this is another, let's support the schools. That this is another, let's support the schools effort.
And, and, and it's a community.
Yeah.
So that, that's what's great.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Motion passed, and thank you again to both agencies. All right, number 20, treasurer's report.
Anybody wants a copy?
I guess I'm not in the way, I'm not.
Not even.
Kind of a snapshot of where we're at this year, of these two expenditures. This is personnel, it's our people, and here's all the benefits associated with our people. So for the first five months, I stated this many times over the years, it wouldn't keep our personnel and benefits under 3%, it's a good year. So what I did is I took this year's five-month actuals, okay, and then last year's five-month actuals for both personnel and benefits. Pretty straightforward, but you can see here that we're tracking right now 1.3% below last year's. I expect this to continue. It might get a little better as the year goes on. We've done a fine job in this district managing our costs, I mean, we don't have much of a choice. I mean, we're stuck in that position, we know we're not getting any more funding, so the responsibility is on us to, to make sure that whatever we do, there is a benefit for it. So, I will do this every month, but if it changes dramatically, I will. There's other reports I'll like to put out, but I expect by month seven or eight, I'll pop this up again along with something else, just to let everybody know where we're at. I mean, this represents, that, 5.1 million in 2.496, represents 78% of our spending. So 78% of the dollars that we spent at Springfield have to do with people, or with their benefits. And, you know, a lot of times people forget that, you know, we're not in the business of producing product, or in the business of producing enhanced young minds, so. It's a big budget, we have a $25 million budget just for general fund, general fund. Add in all the other funds, and you're over $30 million, so. Any questions on this?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Number, the next would be central office reports.
My update this evening is talk about, in the last, this month, we've been conducting emergency operations drills around the district. We do this to help ensure that everybody's prepared and knows what to do in the event of an emergency, so it's second nature and not something that's a surprise, that one of those things that we, hope we never have to use any of the things that we learned through these, but it's a good practice to go through them frequently and can conduct these drills. So this month, we have done two different types of drills. We've done live drills at Shrop and here at Boyer, where we've gone in and simulated a lockdown under the guide of the police department, being here doing that and seeing how things went. After each of those, we, we sit down and discuss what went well, what could we improve on in the next time, and use those to dictate our training moving forward, and what we need to improve on. The other type of drill that we did this month was tabletop exercises, and we did those at Spring Hill and at the high school. In a tabletop exercise, we sit down and discuss, walk through an event, have different snapshots of the event as time progresses throughout the event, and we discuss what each different role and agency would be doing at that time. That's along with the local police and fire departments, so we thank them for their attendance in those. They come and help us understand what they would be doing, understand what we would be doing, and talk about, you know, how we coordinate all those activities in the event of emergencies. So I think those have been very beneficial, we had a lot of great discussion, and, you know, a lot of things that we saw going well, and a number of things that we can work on to improve and make our responses even better, so.
Who's involved in the tabletop? Is it staff?
We involve teachers, administrators, support staff, and then police and fire agencies.
So this isn't contact with student?
No. Yeah, I mean, we were, we were lucky, I think, with both tabletops, that we did one at the high school and one at Spring Hill, that we got representatives from both Springfield and Lake Moore Police and Fire to attend both of those, so they could also, you know, coordinate through those drills there of how, you know, they would respond by providing mutual aid to each other throughout those events there, so.
From the Office of Academics, I just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday season. I hope everyone has a safe break. It is going to feel like heaven to a lot of our students, where they don't have to wake up in the morning to get on the buses to come here, and, but just please read or work on your math, or just somehow stretch your educational process as you go throughout the break.
December, in the world of student services, is kind of a slow month, but it's to, mentally to get me ready to start planning and getting together numbers and rosters, and start working on, already planning for next year, because I'll start working on that after Christmas break.
Where do you start working for next year? Isn't it amazing?
Registration guide.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. I'm gonna be real brief. First, I just wanna thank, I think, you know, during this month, we've had a lot of organizations and a lot of people who volunteered their time, money, supplies, whatever, to help a lot of our families during the holiday season. So I just wanna put out, again, a very warm thank you to everybody who's helped out. I, we, I think we've really made a big difference in a lot of our families this year. And I wanna just, you know, continue on what they're saying, that I want everybody to have a safe and relaxing holiday break, because when January comes up, it's just, we're gonna be running, running, running. I mean, it's gonna be one thing after another, and before we know it, it's gonna be the end of the school, very quickly, so. So everybody here also, if I do not see you, have a great holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and everything, so. Tomorrow, oh, no school, we got school tomorrow, and then we're done for the week, so nobody come Thursday and Friday, please. There will be no buses running. Teachers, you too, stay home.
Okay, there are some items worthy of your note. On December 21st, winter vacation begins, I think you spoke to that, didn't you?
Yes, yes.
January 9, organizational and regular Board of Education meeting at 6:00 PM here at this building. On January 4th, classes resume. On January 11th, end of the second quarter, end of the first semester.
Unbelievable.
Which means semester exams. January 12th, Teachers' Records Day, no school for, on that day. And January 15th, Martin Luther King Day, and again, there is no school there. The next item would be citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments to be made, or that would anyone like to make? And no, we're not telling you what Santa's bringing. No comments, then we'll move to adjournment. We have a motion.
Come on, Larry.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the meeting be adjourned, and part of that motion is a happy holiday to everyone, yes. So we'll vote on that.
Before we vote, I think it's appropriate to note that this was probably one of our shorter board member meetings, and the one thing I always appreciated about Mr. Petrie was, he could get us in and out, man. So fast, and my hand is hurting.
Well, you still gotta take care of business.
Yeah.
So it takes a while longer, it takes a while.
On behalf of myself, and I'm gonna miss it, Larry, you've been a, been a great board member, so. Have fun, you deserve it. Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
I wanted to say that. Let him do the gavel.